Okay, one, two, three.
Oh yeah.
Four, five, six.
Going one.
One, two, three.
The writer, not the photographer did. Obviously.
Hey, one, two, three.
Hey, I heard.
All done?
Can you give us your Bobby Knight line again?
Basically, what's gonna happen tonight is you're gonna have to be my representative. So, when we go do a vote, you'll say, uh, they'll say all in favor and then you'll say aye. And then they'll ask for a move, a motion, and then the specific city clerk will ask for a motion. And then, uh, one of the council members will move it, or it'll be one of your other, uh, classes. They'll move it, and then somebody will ask for a second, then just say all in favor. And then their friend will say aye, and then they'll ask for anybody that opposes that resolution. And then probably whoever opposes that resolution will come as their representative and oppose that specifically. Okay?
How did that feel? I'm off the hat, same for me.
But if you have any questions, you'll be able to take it. I've been a council member for decades, and I speak to elections every six years. It's very enjoyable.
Most of these are very, uh, basic, just takes a lot of time.
This year, because you're like Saskatchewan, you're trying to make your own girl's behavior able, so I've had...
But then you have that burner as far as my application to the Lions Club, because I'm a city official. They expect you to be an active member of the, uh, Lions Lions, which is a role in this organization and stuff. I kind of just abandoned the way I'm old, because I haven't got the budget now to be, uh, tax paid, or be a father.
I think we feel like we're...
I think it's not even much, and it might never be about you.
Well, I had that problem with certain convictions.
They're all matched up, so there's more questions.
At least for... I'll try to do more of those for pledge of allegiance.
You're gonna be speaking for me, hell no.
Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have today young adults participating in Government Day sponsored by the Elks Lodge. These are the same people in years to come that will be our leaders and contributors to our society. Lord bestowed upon them all the blessings and guidance, showed them the right path to follow. Bestow the gift of understanding, love, honesty, respect, integrity, and fellowship. Let them never forget the needs of the people and always extend a helping hand. There are lessons to be learned in life, learn them well. The future is yours, don't let it go to waste. You have so much to offer us, amen.
Clerk call the row.
First ward, here.
Second ward, here.
Third ward, here.
Fourth ward, here.
Fifth ward, here.
Sixth ward, here.
Thank you. Tonight, uh, we are working with the school and the Elks for Elks Youth Night. And, uh, I would like to thank the Elks Lodge here, the exalted ruler Jim Phillips, and Don Thompson for setting this up. And, uh, the cook tonight did a fantastic job over there, Randy Thompson. Delicious meal. I'd like to thank the Elks very much for the meal and the hospitality. Jim, uh, would you introduce the, the folks that are with you and, uh, tell us a little bit about the program?
This is my duty night, Daniel Ganzel. My royal night, barely keep it back. My lucky night, Don Thompson. And my champion, Edie Cordell. And our photographer is Dean Salisbury, secretary.
Hello. Uh, the government youth night is important to the Elks because that's a lot of what we stand for. Elks is, has a lot to do with the youth in our community. CP, service policy is one of our biggest, um, projects. We try to do as much as we can for the youth, but it'd be May Days, which is youth for the city, student government activities. We, uh, get together with Joe Tietro, and, uh, he interred. We both get together with Mr. Fia de Malva, students that are in the government, um, taking the government courses. Find out which ones are interested, and, uh, we try to work together and set a date for the county council. When they're having the county council meeting so that we could all participate, so that you'll do a little bit of firsthand, uh, of what's going on. Next year, we would like to, uh, do more or less a shadow program where you start with the different officials in the morning. You spend the day with them in their, each of their jobs, and then come over and have dinner and to the meeting that evening. So, that's what we're working on for next year, and I really would like to thank all of you. I was just so happy to see such a nice turnout, I really appreciate it. Students and all the officials, I'm very pleased, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sal, would you care to comment on the, uh, on the program? I know you've been a part of it for a number of years now.
Sure, um, yeah, we've been a part of this for several years now, um, oh, wait, I guess. And, um, I, like, on behalf of the kids and the behalf of this collision in the high schools, uh, participation with government teachers. Thank, thank the Elks for having us here tonight, and thanks, thank, uh, the city officials for making this opportunity available to the kids. It's a good learning experience, um, it's another example that you learn things when you're not in school, as well as when you're in school. More learning does have to take place in school, and this is a good example of that type of, of, of that type of activities. Just like to thank everyone again, and, and this mayor, thank, thank you and the council and city officials.
Thank you.
I...
The life is just continuing education.
Sure is.
We have one item to add to the agenda tonight. There'll be a resolution involving a zone change on the properties on, uh, South Second Street. South Fourth Street, I'm sorry. First item.
First item.
The South County Council, May 8th, 1999, hereby approve.
Ask for a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Get the motion in a second.
All in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
Next item.
Next item.
The following letters of claim are hereby referred to the city attorney for his actions. Letter of claim from State Farm Fire and Casualty Company for Kevin and Mary Beth Victory. Cloud Diane Adolphs in New York for property damage alleged to have occurred out of about March 4th, 1999. Letter of claim submitted by Mr. Dan Crew for property damage alleged to have occurred on May 4th, 1999. He fell on a sidewalk in the area of 363 South Fourth Street.
Motion. I move it.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed. Carried. Next item.
We are advised by memo dated May 21st, 1999, from Commissioner of Public Works Raymond K. Graham to Clerk Joseph R. Tietro, which in which he advised the city clerk of expenditures of city funds, materials, labor, and equipment for demolition. It will have certain premises, whereas the premises are described as follows. Owners Rodriguez, Rodriguez Sol and Margarita, property address 6 North 6th Street, Fulton. Owners mailing address 16 West Onondaga Street, Syracuse. Total expenditure by the city, $100. Now therefore be it resolved, there is hereby levy against the premises described above special assess, a special assessment. Especified said special assessment to be effective immediately. And the amount of said special assessment plus interest at 24% per year. So the added to the 2,000 City of Fulton tax bills that Matt Hayes filed prior to December 15th, 1999. Accepting city-owned property, interest on said special assessment shall accrue effective as of the date of this resolution.
How long to that, Your Honor?
Second.
Having a motion and a second. All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to execute the cash easement to Niagara Mohawk Tower Corporation.
City Attorney, uh, you want to, uh, yeah, you're on your own. You want to discuss this?
Where's, where's John? Um, Niagara Mohawk has a, what do they call it, a vault? In front of Fulton Savings Bank, and they want to move it. And in order to do so, uh, they're gonna move it out of there because the sidewalk's, the sidewalk's in bad condition. Once they finish that, actually where they take it from, they're gonna fix that part of the sidewalk. But in order to move the lines that service, I think it's both Fulton Savings and Topath Towers. They need an easement to go across from there, um, over pretty much in a south westerly direction to the... There's some bushes in the park there that they, they are going to, or that they have some...
Would be on that sign.
A transformer there, right? Right. Be on that sign. So they need an easement to run across the street, basically, to get in there and do this. And timing wise, it's gonna be done, I, I don't know, uh, I believe it's certainly gonna be done before the street's paved. And it appears that it's gonna work out that it's gonna be done after it's milled, so. And I've reviewed the proposed easement, and it appears, uh, to be in order.
Then having to do that, are they gonna, can you replace the side door?
Only above the vault, not, we don't think they're gonna replace the whole thing, but, uh...
John, is that part of what needed to be done anyway?
Yes.
So, we can expect it wouldn't be 10,000, be less than that, is our cost?
Possibly. No, well, it's only, it's only a couple pieces of sidewalk.
Okay.
Motion.
I move it.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that City Clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June 15th. At 7:00 PM in the county council chambers of the municipal building located at 141 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York. Relative to the close local law which would amend the city charter to make it coincide with the Fulton Recreation Department's policy manual.
Motion.
Move it.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the street, lighting canal landing project agreement with Niagara Mohawk.
All in favor.
No, wait.
Motion.
I move it.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion.
All in favor. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Uh, mo- motion carried.
Next item.
Next item.
Resolved that the fire department be authorized to hire two temporary firefighters to attend the fire academy, academy in Montour Falls, New York. Said hiring would result in overtime savings due to potential retirement and vacation coverage.
I was, I was just wondering why did you just answer? These are for a couple of people that are gonna retire.
We have, we have some scheduled retirements for later this year, and this will go into effect, uh, in August. At the time that the, uh, they start the classes in the academy. So they won't be hired until August, but that'll allow us to get them through the academy and ready to go before these, uh, officers, uh, retire. And therefore we'll have people ready to replace them.
Motion.
I move it. Second.
All in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yes. Like yes. You have it.
I said no on you.
Next item.
Resolved that two additional summer hires, hires, well, the city hired two additional summer workers to work at the Fulton Recreation Department at a cost of $4,000 that costs to be a transfer from the A 1990s contention account into the recreation account.
Just take this from 10 to 12, right?
Right. And this is for the eight week period, uh, it will just be two additional people. I believe the pay is $6 an hour, uh, for that timeframe.
Motion.
Move it.
Second. Second. All in favor. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the city entered an agreement with Patson Associates with the following services. Preliminary design of a water pump promenade and interpretive trail along the east side of the Swiggo River canal from the Broadway Bridge to Canal Bridge at a cost of $4,000. Preparation of an application of a TEA 21 grant at a cost net to see $3,500. Set approval of either number one, or number two, or both would be a contention to...
Motion.
I move it.
Second.
Who made, who made, who made the motion?
Right here.
Okay. Is the motion for one and two? Motion is for one only. What we have, this was, this was the information that was given to us by CDA a wink or so ago.
Jeff Hodge was unable to be here tonight. He called me shortly before the, this morning, said he tried to get here, but, uh, if there was any questions, he hoped that, uh, uh, that Andy could be answered by the, the councilors that are here.
Now, the way he explained it, the preliminary design package is the $4,000. And then the second part of it was the preparation at 35, but there was a possibility that we could do the, uh, second portion of this locally, uh, through CDA, and possibly, uh, save that amount. So the motion on the table at this point in time is for just number one of this, is that correct? No, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, now, do we have any further discussion?
One thing I wanted to ask, if we do the design work, uh, can our, uh, agency do this application without, uh...
They indicated that they thought that they could do that, yes. They, they have the expertise to do that.
So we don't, we don't need to, these people do?
This will just be for item number one.
Okay. Well, I just wondered if we can do it, why do we have it on there for someone else?
Well, they, they had made this offer, this was part of their offer.
Oh, okay, got it, okay.
So, that, that's why it was put in there, but we can go either way on it.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
I just think this is a very, very good thing, once again, continuing to develop our, our waterways. Uh, as you know, uh, the CDA put a, uh, a grant application in earlier. Um, it was not, uh, approved at this time. Uh, I think the council feels that, uh, with a, uh, another, another consulting firm looking at another design, um, I think it, uh, would be looked on very favorably, and I strongly support it.
And motion.
Motion.
We have a motion. All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion carried. Next item.
Now, do we, do we do a motion on two or no?
No, we just, two, two we did not.
Two we do not have to approve.
We, we did, we did not at this point in time, we, we only approved one.
Okay. So that's only, we can bring this up again if it's needed.
Once they get done, yes, we could do that on the second option.
See engineer's idea.
This, this, this motion, uh, that, uh, the assistant city clerk is about to read is the one that was just put together today upon receipt of the information from the planning commission.
Whereas at the meeting of this time, council held on April 20th, 1999, proposed change of zone from R1A, R3 residential to C2 commercial. The property is located at 602 South Fourth Street owned by Michael N. Google. 604 South Fourth Street owned by Jack Beckwood. 606 South Fourth Street owned by Francis Handley. 608 to 610 South Fourth Street owned by George Bollatt. 612 South Fourth Street owned by Deborah and William Wallberger. And 1 Primrose Lane owned by Hart Warner was referred to the Fulton Planning Commission for a public hearing for their review and recommendation. And whereas at their meeting held on Thursday, May 27th, 1999, said public hearing was held and a resolution recommending approval of the proposed change of zone was carried unanimously by the planning commission. And whereas this council agrees with the recommendation made by the Fulton Planning Commission, now therefore be it resolved that the proposed zone change from R1A, R3 residential to C2 commercial for the above mentioned properties is hereby approved.
Motion.
I move it. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, those are the parcels that are, are just on, um...
Yeah, there's really, along 481 in City Fulton, there's really only two areas right now that are not commercial. And both of them are in the fourth ward. This area is, uh, opposite of where McDonald's is, somewhere between the Masonic Temple and, uh, Nestle Ave. It's that, that's the area of it. The other area that's not...
All the parcels are zone commercial.
Yes, yes, all the parcels are zone commercial. That is residential, right now, there's only one other area after this spot, and it's a small lot between where Taco Bell is and Time Warner Cable. Small area on the corner of Division 481. That's the only other area, uh, along 41 that is not zone commercial. No, I took it out in there, yeah.
Any further discussion?
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion carried. Next item.
We're through the agenda items, um, does anyone in the audience have any business to bring before the council? Does anyone, any council member have any business to bring before the council?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, please. I had a phone call, uh, the parking lot situated across from Fulton Savings Bank. Uh, some sap coming from the trees there on, uh, vehicle. Could somebody check that out? I, you know, the guy called me down.
Any, any, any time that you park any parking lot that has trees nearby, uh, you're gonna...
Yeah, but I, you know, the individual wanted me to bring this up to the council, and, uh, you know, he's worked out a long time on his vehicle and getting that stuff off, and his suggestion was that, uh, possibly just giving a warning out to people that are parking there.
Okay.
Government doesn't always work on big things.
Was it what? Was it, was there a suggestion on how we get this information out? Anything else?
I'll let the mayor speak, and then I'll speak after the mayor.
Oh, you're gonna do that to this thing?
Mayor, I've, I've got a couple of things. Uh, first thing is Sixth Street Yard Repair. Uh, I was out doing a sidewalk, uh, list a couple of weeks ago, and I noticed that repairs on, that were done by the city during winter damage, snow blowing and things like that. The yard work still has not been repaired, and it's June 1st.
Whereabouts is it?
It's all along Sixth Street, uh, save from where Wendy Smith is on, on north. On the, it's on the east side of the street. There's quite a bit of yard damage down in there, it's pretty obvious when you drive through there. And the other, the other question I had was on street sweeping. Is there any, is there any set or coordination as far as street sweeping? It seems like some streets get swept more than others, and some not at all.
Mr. Graham.
Reddall, they started from the sixth ward on the east side, and they're opening to right around Broadway now, so you, your four, four area will be done probably in the next three, four days.
Okay, 'cause I, I'd like to see a regular, I don't know, it just seems that a lot of streets are, are left untouched throughout the year, throughout the year. Okay.
Also, didn't we have the street sweeper was broke down, but...
Yeah, one side, one on the west side. One on the west side, one on the east side.
Anyone else?
Really, you got any? Yeah, tonight, uh, I had a business owner, uh, ask me, uh, when are, are they gonna start the construction on Seal Right?
We're, we're waiting to find out if, uh, we've got the funding to do the infrastructure changes that are required before they do the construction over the, the street.
Yeah, well, I, I tried to, I, I'd be honest with you, Your Honor, he caught me at a disadvantage because I didn't know what to tell him, but, um, he's located in the other end, owns Canal Point, he owns that bottle return. I took some bottles back, but, uh, he, he had a problem, I told him calls on him, but before he forgets, he indicated he wasn't gonna call anybody. What, what, what kind of a problem? Well, what he's got, is he's got a truck, the tractor trailer comes from Swiggo, and, and there's no place, way you can get down in there unless he goes up to PNC and turns your uncle's back. And he just said if they're not gonna build that Seal Right campus this year, why don't they just open the street back up? And I didn't know, you know, I, you know, I was thinking maybe that island that's in there, maybe they could take that out and he could make the swing there, I don't know.
That may be something we can, uh...
I've been, I've been getting a lot of very similar questions from all over.
I think, I, I, yeah, Mark, he kinda hit me with it, you know how people do? I just, I took some cans and stuff back tonight to get them off the porch, and he was...
But he, I've had other questions from other people throughout the city about Seal Right.
We, we are waiting for the funding to...
Why, now, the city's gonna fund that? Why is, why is the city gonna fund that? If it's Seal Right's project, why are they not funding it?
This was one of the agreements the city made back in 1995 to keep Seal Right in the city.
Yeah. No, I agree with that, I just didn't know what the timeframe was, or...
We, we have applied for the funding from HUD.
But will it happen this year, do you think, or are, are you gonna go another year?
Hopefully, we're gonna hear, as soon as we hear, which should be shortly.
Okay.
Then we can get going to get the, uh, the infrastructure, uh, taken care of there.
Well, maybe Mark can get on and see him and look at that, they, they might be, I don't know if you can swing a tractor trailer, you know where the little island is where you can go?
I, I know which one you're talking about.
I know he couldn't get through there, but I'm not sure why that island's even there.
We, we have, we have DOT coming. On the 14th, okay. We'll bring that up with them.
The other thing too, down in that same area is the salvage yard. That area is an absolute mess. They're dragging the mud down the street. And it's, it's covering houses about a block away. And I think that we should look into doing something about them correcting that situation.
They have been put on notice.
It's worse now than it ever has, especially with the rain last week.
Yeah, it is. I seen that. It's pretty bad.
It's an absolute mess.
I never seen it like that before this year.
And he's blaming it on the city. It's the city's fault.
Did they do something down there? Did they, you know, I mean...
I say we send a street sweeper down there, send them the bill for it. There's our fault.
Think you need a dozer?
I believe that they, they've been put on notice of that.
Sorry, yes. That was all I had here. Well, he already responded.
I would like to again thank the Elks for the youth government involvement that they have. And I would like to thank all the, the students that are here tonight. And I hope that it's been interesting for you and you have learned a little bit. And hopefully, next year, if we could get this shadowing program going, we'll give you a little bit more time to see just how things work in City Hall. Do any of the students have anything they would like to say at this time? This is your chance. Everybody's happy.
Thank you for having us.
You're most, most welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Yes. Because you, young people, are the future of our city. And we want you to understand what's going on and get active to make positive things happen in the city. Because as I said, you are the future. Now, Mr. West?
I just wanted to comment on the good things that have been happening in our city, starting with the Pride and the Community Week, which the Chamber of Commerce works so hard on and all the businesses and all the community people that work so hard to make their properties look nice. We've certainly had a couple of great weeks of weather and good things happening. The fun on First Street was, was excellent, the Salvation Army, the Fulton Historical Society, the Fulton Music Association. And then leading into certainly one of the nicest things that's happened in the city was the arrival of the, of the boat, the Waterways Wind Orchestra. It was fantastic. It was a great crowd. And I certainly want to thank Mayor Stafford, John Crook, Carol Fox, and all the people that worked hard to put that together. I think that it was, it was certainly a wonderful thing for our city to have those people come. A lot of the students stayed in Phoenix, a lot of them stayed in Fulton. It was a great experience for us and for them. I also want to thank and commend the people who were involved in Memorial Day salute. John Crook, who gets involved with everything, did an excellent job on the parade. The, all the organizations, the Lions, Rotary, and the other two. I'm a lion and Mike's a major Rotaryian. What's that? Come on, it's the Morning Rotary. Okay, come on, it's the Morning Rotary. But it was a great weekend. Certainly, the parade was great. There was a lot of people there, and I certainly want to thank all the people who made that happen. John worked all kinds of hours, the people that worked with him on that. And those are all the good things.
The volunteer effort to make these things happen has just been extraordinary. And I would again like to thank everyone that was involved in everything with Memorial Day. It really came together very nicely. But it doesn't just happen. It happens with a lot of hard work on the part of many people. And we do appreciate it. At this time, we need a motion to adjourn to executive session on an employment matter.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Certainly, thank you very much.